All right, we are now recording.
All right, um, we're gonna call a planning commission meeting for May 6, 2020. It is now 7:00 PM. There are some things that are gonna happen here at the beginning that might not be on everybody's agenda, just some technicalities and stuff. But we'll do the first thing. In my note here, I'm to call the meeting to honor planning commission, all that, I've done that. Commissioner or Chair Jacobs is not available tonight, our new commissioner. Lanterman is here, Commissioner Shulock is not feeling well this evening. Obviously, Commissioner Veren Camp, I'm here and Commissioner Mu is on the line. So with those things right now, the second thing on the agenda is pledge of allegiance. So if somebody's got a flag that we usually pop up, we can do that and we'll stand it up. I'll do my best to say the words, you can follow along, stand if you're not, if you don't want to, I understand that. But right now, let's say the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag, United States of America, to this republic.
For which it stands.
One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you guys very much. Um, now I can see the rest of my stuff. Appointment of planning commission chair for tonight's meeting. Natalie Ping me with this new agenda and with Commissioner or Chair Jacobs has been excused. And then we don't have a vice chair yet. Commissioner Lu and Commissioner Lanterman. I'm asking you if you agree for the temporarily assign me chair this evening, if you guys are okay with that? Go ahead and say yes, how's that, I'll make it simple.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Thank you guys very much, I'll try not to be too much in charge, but I'll do my best to work us through this and get it there. If there's something I can do different, you guys let me know. And I just lost my agenda on my other side of the screen here, hang on. All right, now we're back. All right, with that, I'm gonna take a minute and I'm gonna hand the floor over to Commissioner Lanterman, I'm saying that right, I hope.
You are, thank you.
As you can all see in the background, Mark looks like he either was from ACDC or some other rock band back in the late 70s, early 80s. But if you wanna take a, take a few minutes to introduce yourself and tell us about you and what you wanna do out of becoming a commissioner for Corcoran.
You know, I, I could say I'm broadcasting live from Guitar Center, but that's, that's not true. So, uh, good, good evening, everyone, my name's Mark Lanterman and thank you for the opportunity to join this commission. Uh, I work for Computer Forensic Services, we're the Digital Crime Lab for the Hennepin County Sheriff's Office. Before joining CFS, I was a member of the United States Secret Service Electronic Crimes Task Force. I've worked very closely with the Corcoran Police Department on a number of cases. I'm also a professor at the University of St. Thomas School of Law. And I've been a resident of Corcoran now for almost nine years and the father of nine children.
Wow. There's things we could say about that, congratulations or condolences, but very cool.
Well, 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 either I'm Catholic or Mormon and I'm not Mormon, so.
Okay, well then you are, uh, everything seems appropriate, how's that? You, you made it onto the planning commission, life is good. Commissioner Wu, any questions for a new commissioner, anything you wanna ask him? Kendra, I assume you've met him already and I already kinda talked about the guitars and stuff in the background. He's like, he's like me, he's got some very talented family members in his family as far as musical. I can sing, but I don't know how to read music, so how's that? Anything?
Welcome back.
Thank you very much, I look, I look forward to working with you.
Great.
We will, uh, we will do our best to have some fun, so, um, join in anytime, guys. So with that, we'll move on to number five on the new agenda and that is agenda, agenda approval. Natalie, you've got on my piece of paper here, you're gonna walk through that agenda for us?
Yep, so real quick, we do have a couple of public comment opportunities. Well, after this, we'll have an open forum for any item that is not on the agenda. After that, we will just skip right over, uh, we usually have a public comment opportunity for items that are not a public hearing. But we don't have anything this month, so we'll just go right to the public hearings. One for T. Sherber demolition and excavating as well as D and D service. And then we should be able to wrap up pretty quickly.
Okay, all right. Any changes to the agenda or anything anybody wants to add now is a good time, otherwise if not. I will entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda, Wu.
Thank you, Commissioner Wu, I'll, I'll second that, it will get rolling. So roll call, real quick, Commissioner Wu.
Aye.
Commissioner Lanterman.
Here.
All right, agenda's approved. Again, Natalie, jump in, I'm gonna do my best, but right now, we're gonna talk open forum. I don't see how many people are on the list because of my split screen, but now is the opportunity for everyone to speak on things that you'd like to tell us or talk to us about that are not items on the agenda. Natalie, if you wanna work, walk through the process and how those people can raise their hand or click on something or whatever, so we can hear them, that would be great.
Yes, so I don't see any, uh, anyone joining us by phone, so I'll just skip right to how you can raise your hand to participate in the open forum. On your computer, this should be accessible via the reactions menu located on the toolbar along the bottom of your screen. Some tablets and mobile devices may have the raise your hand function under the participants tab. And if we, if you do ask that, all comments are kept to a five-minute time limit. And currently, I don't see anyone raising their hand, we usually give it a couple of moments.
Yeah, we'll give it a minute or two here. Having no one, I'll entertain a, entertain a motion or we don't need a motion to close that public comment opportunity, do we?
No, we don't, so we can just go right on ahead to the next item.
Okay, so I'm gonna jump all the way to. We'll go right to seven, is that where I'm at?
Yep.
And seven is approval or review of the minutes of April 1st, 2021. I had no comments on minute changes or anything. Commissioner Wu, you were there, do you have any comments on, on the minutes from April 1?
No, I, I have no comments on those minutes.
Okay. So with that, I'll take a motion to approve the minutes from April 1, 2021, if anybody wants to take that and make that motion, it'd be great.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you. And Commissioner Wu, I think seconded it, so with that, roll call, Commissioner Veren Camp or Chair Veren Camp today, I'll say aye, yes, Commissioner Wu.
Aye.
And Commissioner Lanterman.
Aye.
And with that, we have approved the minutes from April 1, 2021. All right, now, on the number eight, new business, uh, this is a public comment opportunity related to the conditional use permit on site plan for T. Sherber demolition and excavating. At the property located at 2324 County Road 30. I do the PID number, but I'm gonna bore people to death, we'll leave that alone, and then the city file number 21-007. Do we wanna do the public hearing first or do we want Kendra to talk first?
We want Kendra to talk first, Mr. Chair.
With that, Kendra, you've got the, you've got the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, this is a public hearing, it's a site plan and conditional use permit request for T. Sherber demolition and excavating. The item was continued from the April 1st meeting. Some background, the previous landowner was granted a conditional use permit, CUP, for home occupation in 1996 to have a small trucking operation out of the garage and that CUP was amended in 2013. However, that was a home occupation and so the T. Sherber company buying it required a change to those approvals. And last year, the applicant requested a reasonable transitional rural commercial to rural commercial, which was reviewed by the planning commission and approved by the council on December 21st of last year. The applicant has then been working on this site. There's an existing home, a garage, a couple of accessory buildings in the front and one in the rear. This is the corner of 19 and 30 and they've been working on their site plan, which is in front of you this evening. The property is this square parcel on 19 and 30, you can see it's surrounded on three sides by the rural commercial zoning district. And on the west across 19, it's rural residential or rural ag residential land use. T. Sherber demolition and excavating is requesting approval for a contractor's yard with outside storage. That is a conditional use permit in the CR district. They have started remodeling the, the former home to remodel as an office. The site plan shows that two existing buildings will remain for storage for the new business and the existing garage and northern building up back in the field will be removed. The outside storage yard is for equipment and materials. And the applicant did note that the storage large, storage yard is larger than required for this initial phase, that over time, they will move their businesses from multiple locations, they currently have storage or space in Rogers, Corcoran and Medina. And so the intent is to consolidate them all in this location over a period of time. This image shows the existing conditions and then on the right, the site plan. And so a couple of things we'll talk about that I'll highlight here is the existing garage here will be removed as well as this small shed and this shed. This turnaround or driveway on the west side is being removed and the applicant is proposing a single access here. This portion is shown as paved up to this first building, but the rest of this is shown as classified and we're gonna talk more about that. But this is the current plan, which shows about a 1.7 acre outside storage area and retains additional land on this site for future expansion or future development. The site plan shows nine parking stalls in this location, which would provide parking for office employees and any customers. The applicant notes, they don't really get a lot of customers coming to the site and most of their employees would park in one of the garages. This nine parking stalls, we believe is adequate for the use as proposed. As I mentioned, they are proposing to remove this western drive, which reduces the amount of pavement required to be upgraded. That was not a condition that staff originally proposed, it was a recommendation from Hennepin County and the applicant's revised plan shows just the single access off of County Road 930. The code requires all parking and drive aisles to be paved with curb and gutter. Outside storage areas can be classified, but paved areas are required for parking and drive aisles. And so they're showing this area being paved, but we've included a condition that this area outlined in red also be paved. So that provides access from the entrance, paved access back to the parking. And then generally in this vicinity, once you're out of the parking area, you could provide a screening fence to this, this storage area and transition to the class five. The landscaping plan is a little short, the code requires 56 overstory trees and 93 shrubs. So an additional 26 overstory trees and 88 shrubs are required to be planted. And as noted in the staff report, there are some additional screening requirements, so they could use that required landscaping to provide the required screening for the storage area. The storage area is just less than two acres and as I mentioned, and the applicant noted in her narrative that the, the area allows for future expansion, they need far less than this for their initial phase, but wanna plan for the future, so they are showing that class five area being about 1.5, 7 acres. The code requires that all storage areas be screened from public streets and adjoining properties. And so that entire area needs to be screened with either fencing or landscaping. And that serves two purposes, the fencing and landscaping not only contains the outside storage area, so we don't have creep and those areas growing over time, but it also provides the screening from adjacent land uses because those areas tend to be less organized and less attractive in some people's eyes, so the code does require that screening. The plans show some landscaping on the east and west edges of that outside storage area. It is pretty significant spacing between trees and so one of the questions for the planning commission is whether that is adequate screening as shown on those east and west elevations. There is a small fence in the southeast corner of the site, a metal wall similar to what, if you're familiar with Randolph Construction on 116, similar to what they've provided on their site. That corner has that fence, but it needs to be extended along that whole southern edge of the storage area in some way, shape or form, it could be that same metal fence or it could be some chain link fence with slats similar to what's seen on the blocks and rocks site or rocks and block site in the business park. Screening on the north side of the storage area is also required, while this is a rural area and distracted by the sweetheart and Missy's image there, sorry, the north side also needs to be screened. So this image shows this pink area is where the metal fence is provided today. And really, there needs to be that same screening coming across the front somewhere in this area, whether it's here or here, doesn't matter. And then here to screen from the south and then the green shows some additional screening on the north. So they've, I think, got a pretty decent landscape screen, it's a mix of deciduous and overstory trees on the east and west. And the question is, if they provided that same level of landscaping on the north, does that adequately screen it? I believe it could, but certainly that screening is an area where the planning commission should really weigh in on whether that's adequate or if additional evergreen trees need to be provided to provide adequate screening. Again, additional landscaping is required to meet the minimum requirements, so it's likely that once they plant this, they would meet the minimum landscape requirements.
Kendra, can I ask a question real quick about that?
Sure.
If the plan is to obviously grow this business and stuff, would it be acceptable for them to put screen on the north side of the property line? Does that make sense, instead of right there, in case they grow this, this yard bigger than the 1.7 acres and then they don't need to pull up and then replant and stuff, could they just move that screening to the northern edge of their property?
They could, except the, the land, the storage area is really only needed for something like this portion of the site. This does allow, as I understand it, for their full expansion.
Okay.
When we open the public hearing, Missy Sherber is from T. Sherber is on the line and could clarify that. But I, my understanding is, they really are only gonna use a portion of this now, but are gonna build all of this, so they don't have to come back in the future.
Got it, okay, thank you for the, for that question, thanks.
Stormwater management was the reason actually that they asked to be continued from the April meeting, I think, so that they could meet with engineering and fully understand the stormwater issues. There's an existing drain tile that comes from the north and through this site. And their stormwater management plan uses that drain tile system. The city engineer is requiring that they obtain an agreement with those offsite landowners to ensure that the work that happens here on this site doesn't affect those owners. And if it does, that this landowner will make the correction needed. So there is some work to do on the stormwater management plan, but my understanding is that the engineering team has met with the development team and have a plan to move forward. A new treatment basin is still required and is subject to city watershed approval approvals. As always, that is a condition of approval, there's still work to be done on those, but again, I believe there's a path forward for the applicant and to obtain those approvals. The conditional use permit is to allow a contractor's yard with outside storage. And the staff report outlines the conditions needed to be met to issue a conditional use permit. And as I noted in the staff report, this is the type of business that's anticipated in the rural commercial district. This is intended to continue as a rural service area with commercial uses that don't need sewer and water. They tend to have less strict building and development standards than other commercial districts in the city. So, for example, we will allow gravel storage areas here and we wouldn't typically allow those kinds of facilities in our industrial and business park areas. But this also addresses our economic competitiveness chapter, competitiveness chapter in the comprehensive plan to recruit new businesses into the city. And so again, this does meet the goals of the comprehensive plan and is exactly the type of business anticipated in the rural commercial district similar to existing businesses such as Ebert Construction, Dovizinsky and S. Brothers in the same zoning district. We do find that the conditional use permit standards either have been met or can be met with the conditions in the draft resolution. But we do believe the commission should provide some feedback and direction on whether the proposed landscaping on the east and west is adequate to provide screening and should be extended to the north or whether some additional screening is required to screen that outside storage area. And so with that, we do recommend that you open the public hearing and take public comments and then we recommend that you move to approve the draft resolution for site plan and conditional use permit approval. I'd be happy to answer any questions, Mr. Chair, and I know the applicant and her engineer are on the call this evening as well.
Okay, um, thank you Kendra very much. Natalie, you've got in her notes to open the public hearing, should we hear from the public first or do you guys, would you guys rather hear from the applicants? I don't have anybody talking.
Let's hear from the applicant.
You wanna hear from the applicant, Chair Wu, okay. Let's do that and if they can stay on the line after we listen, public comments and they could address again, but Missy Sherber, I think you're the one, or is there someone else that wants to speak on behalf of the applicant?
Yeah, so I'll just share, um, thank you Kendra for that recap, that was great to just have the visuals and everything. My name is Missy Sherber, my husband and I own this business, we have been in this area for a long time, we're really excited to finally be able to have the means to have our business planted in Corcoran and not in Rogers, Corcoran and Medina. Um, so the reason we proposed, I just wanted to put this out there from the personal side and then I'll have Scott kind of our engineer propose what, from the practical side. We are trying to be as conservative as possible with this inner, what we, what we consider an interim plan. We're small right now, we need the space, we don't fully know how we're gonna use it, we don't know what that looks like. We, our hope and goal is to present a full development, site development plan to, to you in three to five years. Once we've grown a little, once we've used the land, once we see what that looks like. And post-COVID, we just are trying to be really conservative, um, just to get into the property to learn how we're gonna use our own property all in one location. And again, our goal is compliance and a great relationship with the city and the neighboring community. But we're trying to be as conservative as possible with the current, you know, environment and what's happened with COVID. And so that's why we did go on the conservative side with the asphalt and the, um, let's see, screening. There's also a practical side of that as well, but additional asphalt that's being proposed, while again, I understand it is a huge expense, it's upwards of $10,000 to $20,000. It's upwards of 10 to 15 for the full screening recommended and I'm just nervous that we would spend all that and then in a few years, finally figure out our full plan for this site and have to rip it out or tear it down. And so if we can find a happy medium that the commission feels good about and that council feels good about, we would greatly appreciate, appreciate that. But Scott, you have more on the practical side of what your thoughts were and why you proposed it this way, correct?
Sure, Scott Dolkey, Civil Engineering Site Design. You know, so one of the things that we typically try and achieve when we're looking at paving something is to get a 20-year life out of a, out of a pavement section. And understanding, you know, where Sherbers are at and, and the unknowns here, it's really tough to justify putting down all this extra pavement, knowing that you're only gonna get, you know, not even a quarter of the life out of that pavement before it's highly likely that it's gonna be taken up. You know, tore out. You know, what we are proposing for the access to remain on the west side and paving up to that, to that, to that building that's shown on this plan in front of you, it, it does satisfy or achieve the goal of the Hennepin County Highway Department request to, to have a paved access, there'll be no, no tracking of, you know, materials out onto the county road. So, and with the limited, uh, visitors, you know, they, they don't really have visitors coming in and out, it's strictly as employees mostly. Probably a few salespeople are gonna come in and out once in a while, but you know, with the limited amount of traffic that's coming in and out of there, it's, it's tough to justify the extra pavement that's, that's requested there. Turn it back to you, Missy.
Yeah, I think Scott just put it well, and again, we want to eventually propose like a, a full comprehensive plan and, and that's where I think we have the big conversations of, of, of the screening and asphalt, but right now, it would be challenging. And, and our use of the property at this point isn't any more traffic than Kathrati, who was there previously, so we're not adding. He actually has more trucks than we have, we have three, he has six. So I just, I feel like if we can try to work together to be conservative on this round, it would really be appreciated with us and to, you know, but again, open to your feedback and we wanna be compliant and build a good relationship with the city, this is a very visible spot, you know. I have very high standards with how things look and appearance and cleanliness and hopefully, you know, we can have a little day of the dozer for kids in the community, so I don't want it to look like a junkyard and, and, and really want this to be kind of a prized corner and look very, very nice, so we'll do our best there. But if we can work on just the most conservative route, just to get us in there and get rolling, that would be, that would be awesome.
All right.
If I can, if I can add a couple more items here, screening, comments. Talk about the screening along the south side first, I guess. One of the things that I've been discussing with Sherbers is the staff comment about screening in between the two buildings on the south side there. What we'd like to propose and is something that I've just come to understand here and commissioners, you've probably been out and by the site, you'll see that there's a, there's a windmill immediately north of the pond. On this graphic, you can see where there's a pond just to the west of the, of the driveway that's to remain. And there's, there's a square just immediately north of that, that's, that's an existing old farm windmill that's there, it's on a concrete pad. And it's my understanding that that's now going to go away, the, the property seller, I think, is gonna retain that and take that, take that. So that's gonna open up that area through there, uh, once that gets removed. And instead of a, a screen fence in between the two buildings, I think what we'd like to propose is planting that area with the trees similar to that, what we have on both the east and the west. similar to that, what we have on both the east and the west side. So it basically kind of follow the curve going around the pond there. Follow the edge of what we're proposing for gravel. Missy, is that, correct me if I'm saying something out of, out of school there. But that's, that's what we'd like to propose instead of a fence or anything in between the two buildings. And, and we believe it would extend over, said it would satisfy, you know, your, your comments about all visual from the south there.
Missy, do you have anything to add to that?
No, she's giving a thumbs up, I see. So, and then I guess my, you know, my comments for the screening along the north side. You know, we're, we're 200 feet away from the north boundary there. And then it's an expansive field to the north. Quite, quite, you know, it's like, what, 500 feet or something like that? You know, all the property that's, you know, surrounds this is all the same RC zoning. It's going to have similar uses and whatnot. I, I, I struggle with the, you know, the benefit of having screening along the north side there. You know, I can definitely understand it on the west side from the county road. And I can even understand it from the, from the east side because you can see from County Road 30, you know, coming across there. But from the north side, there's, there's nobody but the birds that are going to be able to have any benefit out of that screening.
Scott, and Kendra can correct me if I'm wrong. That, that's what I'm understanding too. But the future plans and everything else, the north side of this property, I think, is currently zoned ag rural, so to speak. It is not the commercial. I think you're the furthest property north zone is commercial. Is that correct, Kendra?
It does, the commercial does wrap up and around the north side of this.
That's correct. It does wrap around that. But, but certainly we are protecting, just like we do in our industrial park. We protect adjacent industrial users from, of other outside storage uses. And so it does not distinguish between whether it's residential or industrial. But it is the same rural commercial district planned on the northeast and south sides of this property. The rural ag is on the west side of County Road 19.
Yeah, and that's, that's what I was kind of wanting clarity to. And, and when I asked Kendra when she was presenting, is there a way that you could just do screening on the north side along that north property line? Would that save? But we can talk more of that as we go. But, okay, now I see what you got. I know I see the, the, the plan that's, that Kendra pulled up. But no, I, I understand. Great fan of the, of Missy and her team. They've got a really nice building down in kind of industrial park down in Corcoran. You guys do a good job back in that corner. I'd love to be able to help you. But I think what's best right now, Scott, if you have nothing else to add, or Missy, if you have nothing else to add, I'd like to open the public hearing to see if anybody from around the area has something to say about this, if that's okay with everybody.
That's great, Dean. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, guys. Again, this is a public hearing for the Sherber site. I wanted to clarify that. I also want to make sure everybody knows and understands if you've got something to say as we open this public hearing. We'll give you, we'll give you five minutes. As every one of you know, I, I really do night like repetition and those kind of things. Our, our three chairs that we have on, on, on the meeting along with our other two, if they were, we listen to kind of beat a dead horse. We don't need to do that, if that makes sense. With no further ado, Natalie, if you want to give everybody the heads up on how they can jump in, come up identified that is a cute kid. Looks like she's got something to say. So Natalie, if you can take it from there, I'm going to turn the light on here in my sunroom and make things a little bit better on my end. Go ahead, Natalie.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. For members of the public that would like to participate in the public hearing, on your computers, you should be able to use the raise your hand function accessible via the reactions menu located on the bottom toolbar of your screen. Some tablets and mobile devices will have the raise hand function under the participants tab. And I will ask you to state your name and address for the record to begin with. But currently, Mr. Chair, I'm not seeing anyone raising their hand.
We'll give it a minute, I guess. When I look, we see a couple of these guys that are part of our council and I think our mayor is on too. But we don't want to really hear much from them yet. So we'll say their comments later. How's that for getting my digs in? If there's no one, Natalie, I'll entertain, entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll take a motion, make a motion to close the public hearing.
Thank you, Commissioner Wu. I'll second it, Commissioner Baron Camp. All in favor, roll call, Commissioner Baron Camp or Chair Baron Camp tonight? I got to get used to asking myself or saying that tonight. I'll say yes. Commissioner Wu? And Commissioner Landerman? With that, the public hearing is closed. Now, it's as simple as the three of us. Any comments we have? Any recommendations we may want to change and such? I'd really like to help out the Sherbers, and I understand the challenges. But there are a number of things. Our last meeting, we went through and we kind of slammed the door shut on a number of things and didn't really give a whole lot of variances and those kind of things. But I'd like to hear Commissioner Wu and Commissioner Landerman, what you guys have to say. I can speak last, Commissioner Wu or Landerman. Neither one of you guys want to go first?
Mr. Chair, could I just weigh in quickly before the discussion, just to provide some context?
Please.
The commission does not have discretion to waive the paving requirements.
Okay.
The applicant would either need to request a change to the code to not require paving or ask for a variance. And they did not do either. So that is not something you could prove. You do have some discretion on the screening and whether the screening proposed is adequate. So I think that is where your discretion lies this evening, not with the paving. You could express support, if you wish, for an application that might come in the future. But tonight, you do not have discretion in waiving a paving requirement.
Okay, all right. I just, I know and understand what they're going through with the heavy equipment they have and such. I drove by tonight on the way home from work and they were working on a dump truck with a trailer with an excavator in the back of it. And I know what it takes to support that when it, when it comes to paving, concrete, whatever is needed. So I'm sympathetic. But if we can't recommend anything on pavement options, Commissioner Landerman, I think you were about ready to jump in?
No, I've, I've read the materials and, you know, I'll defer to Commissioner Wu. But, you know, at, at this point, I would move to recommend approval of the resolution.
Okay, all right. Thank you, sir. Commissioner Wu, do you have any comments?
Kendra, I missed how many trees and shrubs are pending to meet the requirements. I got 26 overstory, but I didn't get the number of shrubs that need to be added to the planting plan.
Eighty-eight additional shrubs. The, the code would require a total of 56 overstory trees and 93 shrubs.
And so they're actually short right now in their current landscape plan?
Yes, they are short 26 overstory trees and 88 shrubs.
So if they are proposing to add screening as the, the civil engineer described down by, down by that south boundary, north of the pond, there would actually be even more trees and shrubs that would need to be required, right? If they're doing that in lieu of a fence.
Right, if they added landscaping down by the pond where the windmill is, that would use some of those missing 56 trees and 93 shrubs could be used there to meet that minimum planting requirement, absolutely.
Okay.
It wouldn't use, you could put 56 trees there, but you could put some trees there.
Okay. And is there a concern, you know, that the topography slopes down to that existing vegetated area? That depression area that they're, they're going to create a stormwater management? Is there concern that by planting that northern boundary, that they're actually pushing water to flow over where the newly planted screens would be? And it could cause the death of those plantings? I mean, how do you manage that area such that the water gets to the pond, but it doesn't wash away the soil from the roots along the screen that, you know, is to be planted at this north boundary?
Yeah, great question. Certainly, the stormwater management plan is not finalized. And that's something that would need to be worked through. But it's not unusual to direct traffic through, direct traffic, direct drainage through landscaping. And I think there is a way to accommodate that.
I noticed that in the, in the installation, it's not an installation plan, but it's basically talking about, let's see, which one is it? It's the SWIP. And it shows a silt fence that wraps around that northwest boundary and then turns around as they do their earthwork. My question is, after they've installed the class five, and I noticed that she mentioned there'd be no fines, which is the class five that's compacted down, how is the class five, how can you make sure that it's contained in that 1.7 acre area? And that it doesn't end up clogging up the existing drain tile? Or, you know, clogging that proposed interim stormwater management pond?
Well, it is certainly a challenge. I trust our engineering team and their engineer to work through that. You know, it's certainly easier to manage when you have a paved surface. But, but certainly the reason we allow these gravel storage areas for contractors' yards is they do have heavy equipment. When you're loading and unloading, you kind of need that. So there are ways to manage that, that, that I'm certainly not an expert on. But I think that's important, that it be managed and approved by both the city and the watershed to ensure that that stormwater area is protected in perpetuity.
And then it's probably on here, but I see that they're calling out the trees as bald and burlap. What's the, what can we expect for tree size on, on the day that they're installed?
Yeah, the code, they are meeting the code requirements. So there's six-foot boll and burlap for the evergreen trees or the conifer trees and two and a half inch for the deciduous trees. So they're fairly, I think, fairly significant trees at planting.
And I don't see anything on the grading plan for berms. But, and I'm sorry, I did not read the ordinance, so I'm not up on that. But do we ever offer that if they were to berm and then plant that there's a reduction in total tree number? Or it's tree number regardless of what you do with the grading?
We do not offer a swap of berm in lieu of trees. I will say, we do offer some credit for existing trees where that could provide some screening. And so the commission could look at some of the landscaping that exists to the west. You know, it's mostly to the southwest of the storage area, but there may be some willingness to provide credits for that.
Yeah, unfortunately, it doesn't really, it, it, if I go just by, by the grading and drainage plan, which delineates the boundaries of the existing, it really just screens the buildings from the intersection of, of 19 and 30. I don't know how that can apply to the proposed 1.7 acre storage area. It, it just doesn't seem to do it. I mean, I personally would love to give them a credit for that, but it's just, it's in the wrong spot for the proposed development as far as what it's supposed to achieve for the proposed development. I don't think I have any other questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Wu. We'll come back to everybody again, like Commissioner Jay or Chair Jacob has done. I'll make a few comments and stuff. Commissioner Wu brings up a good point on the trees. Kendra, do any of the trees at the intersection of 19 and 30, are all they, are all of them counted in the current tree count that's there?
No, we don't give. So the landscaping that's required to be planted is in addition to any landscaping or trees that are preserved on site.
Okay.
So those are not counted in that calculation.
So could that be an inventory of moving those trees around on the site and take care of this? I just, I, and I'm going in the direction of that intersection. I think we all know that intersection is probably one of the worst. I know that the county has done a right lane acceleration going north on 19. I really dislike roundabouts, but I think this would be a perfect place for a roundabout. But the previous owner, just a tremendous number of trees in that corner. And I'm worried at some point that those trees will be removed if, if an improvement to that corner is done. So, Missy, and I think it was Scott, that may or may not be one of those things you want to think about as, as you guys finalize everything. But that's one of my thoughts. Again, the pavement side, what a nightmare. While I know and understand the 1.7 acres being a storage facility, I know a tremendous amount of that dirt is going to need to come out and probably a barrier underneath. And then probably eight to 10 inches of class five underneath it. So I trust your group and our, our, our staff is going to do a good job on helping you guys. But all that dirt's got to go somewhere. Kendra, would berms around that, that storage area help? Or would they still need to add the fence on top of the berm, if you know what I mean?
Right, the, the code requires that storage areas be screened to 80%. And so the best way to do that is with landscaping or a fence. You absolutely can use a berm.
Okay.
Most of our industrial users do use a fence. But landscaping is what the city says is the preferred method of screening.
So I'm just giving everybody something to think about. Question about, you kind of said it earlier, a comparison that I think this would be is the Dobbo site just south on 19 and such. I assume that's, when that started many, many years ago, I believe those pines were extremely small and now they are huge. It is extremely hard to see what's back there in their building or beyond their building. You got to literally drive into that, that class five area around their building and stuff. They do a great job storing things and such. And I'm, with all the buses and everything back there, it's, it's unbelievable what's done. So I'm assuming the, the Dobbo site is, is essentially, we are asking the Sherbers to do the same with theirs. So a lot of comparison can be done there. I hope that's right. Kendra, you got to look like, what am I talking about?
No, that, that is right. Dobbo was done under a different code. So the standards were a little bit different when they were approved. But when they were originally approved, they did have a paved parking lot in the front of the building. And then you moved back into their gravel storage lot.
They got a paved side on the backside of their building too, so.
Right. And so I think that's generally what we're asking for. They did get some council approval for some storage in sort of the front yard that is not paved recently. But generally, the original approvals are what we're asking for here. A small paved area where the parking and access is, and then behind the bed building to be gravel and to be screened. In Dobbo's case, it's mostly screened by buildings. And certainly a portion of this can be screened by buildings. And then the remainder needs to be landscaping or fencing.
I got it. Um, I, the, the, the comments from Scott as far as instead of fence and stuff from the large building to the smaller um, building to the smaller building, and I think you said that already Kendra, that would be okay if they were to put pines in between there, I think that would be a wise thing. Um, do they need um, that one point seven acres gated then too? Is there, is that going to be a lockdown area and stuff? That might be a question for Missy or Scott, but.
I don't believe they're, they they do not have a desire to gate and screen that, I don't believe. And the landscaping as proposed, I think if done as Scott described, could do, could meet the screening requirement that we were talking about. Again, we're flexible whether it's fencing or screening. We just don't want to see the outside storage from adjacent properties or public streets.
I I trust staff that that'll be done right. Um, if I could ask uh, Missy or Scott just a real quick question on this one point seven acres, is that going to be all the dumpster type of your business? I think that was what you were talking about last time you came, but there will be some equipment back there. If you could just explain that one more time.
Yes, so um, our dumpster business doesn't really use the yard because the dumpsters are always out. Um, and then we store our dumpsters at the two landfills and transfer stations that we use for efficiency. We do typically for logistics, we'll have like two to four empties. You know, we have them lined up nicely in the yard. Um, but it's more for the demolition excavating company for the equipment to come in and out. But again, during the summer months during our busy season, most of it's out on job sites. So the size is more for turnaround, so the trucks can pull in safely, turn around, park properly. Um, it's the size is more about that, less about packing a bunch of things in there.
You're talking some uh, um, dump trucks. Decent sized graders, excavators, it's all is all what's going to be back here, maybe a few uh, choice dumpsters just for quick access and those kind of things. Okay.
Yes, sir.
All right, well, thank you.
Yeah, thank you. And the reason we were just wanting to discuss, a- again, we're just, this is such an interim plan for us right now. And so that's why we're hoping that whatever's up to discretion can be a little conservative. We're not asking for that forever. You know, we do want good screening once we have more of a permanent plan for the site. It's just challenging after COVID to make a permanent commitment.
This, this has been an absolute nightmare for businesses and stuff.
It has.
Um, oh, I just.
Yeah, it's survival of the fittest right now and uh, we're committed to our team and we'll get there.
When you guys needed to pave, which probably is sooner than later, I'm guessing most of your paving would be cement because asphalt's not going to handle the the equipment, correct?
Right, right. I I think that's what they're thinking. We also have to think, what are we going to want to? What might be have to demo in the future as we grow and what, so what's cheaper? Obviously, we're thinking most about cost right now. And our hope is for some flexibility. Again, I know we have to go to before council, but kind of with that parking lot area, because our operation, we're just so small right now, we're we're half the size we were a year and a half ago, but we'll get back there.
I can, I am along with everybody else um, on this call and then some. I wish you so much business, you don't know what to do.
Thank you. We appreciate that. So that the trees that they're proposing, if it helps put a price tag to it, it's like fifteen to twenty grand.
Oh, yeah, no, I did it. In my mind, it's an investment. I would like, I was thinking was, it would be nice if you could screen the entire property on that north side instead of right next to your deal, but that's one of those things you got to work out and talk.
I understand. I understand. We'll do our best.
Uh, Scott, when you were talking, you did not want to get rid of one of those driveways, was that correct?
No, no, we're we're fine with removing the existing westerly driveway and and working with just just the easterly driveway. I guess what I was, what I was looking to convey was with that easterly driveway and what we were doing to pave it, it uh, it satisfies the the comments that Hennepin County Highway Department had regarding a paved access that eliminated, excuse me, eliminated the uh, tracking out onto the county road, so.
Right, okay. Yeah, I just, and I'm guessing if you did have to pave, you would do concrete to the main building and then asphalt off of that? Is that about right?
Yeah, that's something we got to work through here. Uh, like Missy said, you know, it's all uh, cost factor and uh, it's like I said, it's it's tough, you know, typically you want to get a twenty-year lifespan, you know, whenever the city does a road or any, we do any public road in any city, uh, MinDOT, uh, what have you, you know, you always your goal is to get at least twenty years of life out of that pavement, it'd be just because it's so expensive with all the preparation, all the base material, the asphalt, the oil, uh, everything. Uh, you want to get at least twenty years out of it. Uh, so when we're, when we're looking at something that's an interim, uh, you know, possibly five years and then uh, okay, uh, we got to tear it up. Uh, that's, that's a tough pill.
It's, it's hard to swallow, very, very. Um, in the interest of time, I'm sitting here looking at my watch and we've been on this for a little bit. Um, Commissioner Lan- Lanerman, do you have anything else or Commissioner Wu, do you have anything else to add?
I do not.
Thank you, and Commissioner Wu.
Uh, Kendra, when we're asking clients to uh, applicants to pave with asphalt, um, it since these applicants are speaking of the temporary, potential temporary nature of the asphalt, can they get away with just doing a base layer and not doing the two-layer process to save money? Is that, is that appropriate?
I can't answer that. We have standards for parking lots. The same standards that Dobozinski uses, we're asking these folks to use. Uh, temporary is one of my least favorite words. We've heard it a lot. We're going to hear it later tonight. Is it's not defined. And so what the code says is when you open your new business, you need to pay. Uh, certainly, I think engineering can work with what the minimum is for this low volume use. Uh, trucks and tractor trailers drive over pavement every day and they drive over um, parking lots that are not built to a public street standard, so they are already a a smaller um, section. So I think we can work with them to make sure that we're meeting the intent of the code and not over designing a parking lot.
So, okay. So with that, Dean, um, I propose, uh, can I make a motion?
I, it's some great comments. Kendra, you said it very well on the temporary. I I think it's time for motion. Um, the other thing that I don't think we need to worry about is that the drain tile and drainage, I'm quite certain staff will straighten it out, so I will absolutely entertain a motion, Commissioner Wu.
Okay, I'll I'll make a motion to approve the resolution as written for approval of the site plan and conditional use permit with as written with the recommendations in the resolution.
Sounds good. Uh, I've got a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, thank you too very much. Um, we'll take roll call. Um, myself, uh, Chair Varan Camp. I I agree with that motion and I'll say yay. Commissioner Wu.
Hi.
And Commissioner Lanterman.
Hi.
With that, uh, the recommendation passes. Um, Missy, Scott, I think you've got a great team. I think you're working with a good team and I know um, we've got a couple of council members on uh, meeting tonight along with the mayor and such that have heard everything. I I think you guys can come up with something good that'll help um, everybody follow code and everything work out. And I am a neighbor. I was going to ask if you wanted to sell that windmill, but I guess with it's going to go with the, it's going to go with the previous owners, so. Um, good luck. Um, if there's anything else you need, um, I think you're in good hands with Natalie and Kendra to help you out, so.
Great, thank you so much, and I'm sure we can find you a windmill. Have a good night.
It looks like bedtime too for somebody.
It's bedtime, I gotta run.
Thank you guys so much. Um, great job, everybody. We're going to move on to uh, uh, item B, I think we're in section eight, yep. Item B and that's a public hearing for uh, site plan and variance for D and D services at twenty-three, four oh five, County Road ten. Um, the PID number is noted there and the city file number is twenty-one dash twelve. Kendra, I think you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Acting Chair. This is a site plan, conditional use permit and variance for approval of a contractor's yard with outside storage. Uh, similar to the previous use, however, this includes a variance to allow outside storage in the front yard on this corner lot. This site will look familiar to a couple of you. This is a site that we approved a similar request for CommLink on in twenty nineteen. That approval has since expired and D and D service is now requesting approval for a different site plan on this site. Like the previous application, this is guided rural service commercial and zoned rural commercial. There are some existing homes on this site that will be removed as part of this a existing home and existing and accessory structures up in this area that'll be removed. This is an unusual site in that it's not a corner lot, but it has frontage on two streets. County Road ten on the north and County Road nineteen on the south, or excuse me, on the west. It is surrounded by a large property uh, on on the other side and public works you can barely see on this is directly uh, south. So this is the property and the properties on the south and east are rural egg. And the properties on the north and west are the same rural commercial. This is the site plan proposed by the applicant. Uh, I did get a call from the applicant yesterday and they wanted to note that after reading the staff report, their request would actually be to do their phase two uh, outside storage here as part of phase one and re- keep this as a future phase. So what they'd like to do is expand this outside storage area all the way out here and down here as part of the request this evening. The project would have a new entrance off of County Road ten, would come in parking in the front of this new office service building and then access in the back here and here to the rear storage yard. There is a fenced delivery area in the storage yard and the rest of the storage area yard would be used for vehicle and uh, material storage. The office is in the front of this building and there are service bays in the rear of the building. There are plans for some future expansion, not at this time. There are a couple of water storage tanks in the rear of the building. They would be screened from the front yard by the building itself on the north. And then we'll talk about screening of the storage area as we move through the project. The building is about twenty-eight thousand square feet. The office and shop area um, would be surrounded by a uh, uh, outside storage in the rear. There are two future accessory buildings planned. I didn't highlight those, but you saw those on the plan. Uh, and they would like that approval for that larger area. I should go back for a minute. Again, this is not a front yard in this area because there are houses here, but the way this kind of jigs and jogs, this portion is a front yard. And the code does not allow outside storage in front of a building, so this is a front up here. And outside storage would not be permitted, but everything west of this building line is also a front on this particular lot. And again, it's unusual because it's not a corner lot, but it does have two fronts, so the variance is to allow this outside storage area here. Uh, the outline is the storage area and uh, one of the things that we'll talk about with this one is the similar landscaping and screening requirement. The only fencing is around this area here where deliveries come and get dropped off in this locked storage area. And there's some landscaping on the south, but additional landscaping is required. Um, this is a future expansion area, so I think there should be some discussion about how the screening from the east might occur to the east might occur. There's limited landscaping here. Um, you know, whether it's a fence or landscaping in this area or this area, some additional landscaping to the east should be provided to provide screening. The applicant did suggest yesterday that maybe they would loo- move these trees from this future area and shift those over to the west to provide some additional landscaping. And we can talk a little bit more about that uh, as we move through this. The building itself would be a mix of prefinished metal siding, fiberboard lap siding and stone. In the rural commercial district, we do allow more metal siding that we, than we do in any other district. A maximum of fifty percent of any elevation may be metal. The plans submitted show the south wall as entirely metal. And staff has included a condition requiring this to be revised to comply with the code requirements. The applicant is requesting uh, variance for that because they're saying that there is a future addition plan and then this building wall is temporary. Same comment that it's a to be determined temporary and uh, without a fixed date, that temporary wall could remain in place for an awfully long time, so the planning commission should discuss that. Our draft resolution requires it to be upgraded to no more than fifty percent metal. This is the uh, elevation facing County Road ten. This is the north elevation, so we've got uh, metal uh, lap siding and stone with a sign over the front entry, a blue awning and some blue trim on the roof line. Uh, the east and west elevations do have overhead doors, um, as shown as white doors. Um, and then this is the rear elevation that's all metal uh, as opposed to the mix of metal lap and stone on the other two uh, side elevations in front. Um, these three elevations, I think, really do a nice job of meeting the intent of the rural commercial district. There's heavy truck traffic. Uh, they've done, I think, a nice job of mixing elements um, to meet the percentages of materials. And um, the commission should discuss the south elevation. The code requires thirty-nine parking stalls and again, like the last conversation, does require those parking stalls to be paved. The current plan shows a number of, about twenty-three of those stalls on the north side of the building that are paved. And then an additional uh, portion of the stalls, sixteen stalls on the south side of the building or in the storage yard that are gravel. And so we've included a condition that those required stalls be moved north into that paved parking area to meet the code requirements. There's room to do that and the applicant has indicated that they'll be able to accommodate that. The outside storage again, once you get out of that parking area behind the building can be class five, which is what they're proposing, so that does comply. Signage, one freestanding sign and one wall sign are permitted. The wall sign as shown does comply with the code requirements. Outside storage must be screened from streets and adjacent properties, and so again, um, the screening does need to be upgraded on uh, the northwest and south elevations in particular. Um, again, you can do that by decreasing the separation between the the trees here, uh, doing a double wall of plantings. Um, adding some more plantings in this area to provide the screening and certainly on the west. I think the east elevation's a little bit challenging, kind of like the north elevation on the last one. There's a lot of separation between the storage area and the adjacent property, more so than the the previous request, I think, or at least equivalent. Uh, and it is a future expansion area planned. But the commission should discuss whether a fence, which could be temporary, should be installed here or landscaping here, or whether that should be over here. But again, our code does require the outside storage area to be screened from public streets and adjacent properties. So some work needs to be done, either fencing with slats or landscaping or a combination. The site is served by well and septic. Uh, there are some septic locations shown on the plans. Uh, I understand from the applicant that they are reevaluating those based on some new soil borings and that they are likely to move. The sep- final septic location must be approved by Hennepin County prior to issuance of a building permit. Stormwater, I, as always, additional work needs to be done on the stormwater. The engineers' comments were in the staff report. Um, there are some revisions needed to the stormwater management plan to meet city approval. And then the applicant must also receive watershed approval. Again, this is a pretty typical condition um, uh, for these types of approvals. Those need to be addressed before issuance of a building permit. There's one new access permitted or proposed from County Road ten. That is because that is the only access that the county will allow. The county has said they will not allow access off of County Road nineteen and they will allow only one access of County Road ten in this general vicinity. The county comments, which were included, also require a turn lane into the site, so the applicant is working with them to design that turn lane. As I mentioned, a variance is required to allow outside storage in the As I mentioned, a variance is required to allow outside storage in the front yard. And staff does find, as outlined in the staff report, that there is in fact a hardship caused by the odd shape of the lot. This isn't a corner lot where the building could be shifted to the north west corner of the site and reduce that front yard. They're really limited where that building can move because they don't own some of the land in the northwest corner. So it's not a corner lot. They can't really move the building and therefore they do have a lot of land that's in the front yard on County Road nineteen. Staff supports the variance, but only if adequate screening is provided with landscaping or fencing as outlined in the staff report. Staff finds that the standards for the site line conditional use permit and variance have been met with the conditions in the staff report. However, the burden of proof is on the applicant to show that the variant standards have have been met. And if the commission finds that they have not been met, they should recommend denial of the variance and provide findings of fact. With that, we recommend that you open the public hearing, take public comments and then move to recommend approval of the site line conditional use permit and variance as outlined in the draft resolution. And once again, Mr. Chair, the applicant is here this evening. If you have questions for them.
Perfect. Well done, Kendra. That significant difference from the requests that came to us on this property a while back, right? Three pretty large buildings are going to go on this property. And this, this is, this is significantly different. So thank you. A lot of preparation in to make those changes and such. With that, we'll kind of follow along what we did last time. Let's just hear from the applicant first before we open the public hearing. This is a public hearing, right? Yeah. So let's, let's hear from the applicant first as we did on the last person.
I see both Wade and Greg are on the call.
Well, my name is Kevin Griffin. I'm the owner of KMM Land Development, which just simply holds properties for us and leases them back to our operating entity, which is named KKR LLC, but has the DBA of D and D service. So you may have seen our vehicles around your area over the last twenty, thirty years. I took over the company in two thousand and three and we are a utility telecommunications construction company. We own a property in the Medina Hamel area and rent some land and bay space from one of our neighbors. And we also rent property in kind of the Loretto Corcoran area. And we've been around for many, many years. But we find as we are trying to grow that we're basically landlocked. And we're very excited about this property in that way for us to grow is to be able to have room for larger equipment like directional drills and plows and excavating equipment. And that's primarily the reason that we've picked that spot. We love Corcoran. We've been around there for years and think it's a great site for us to work on. You know, due to COVID, we also you know, slowed down a little bit, but thankfully, most people look at the delivery of internet and phone and cable as a necessary thing. So we've been able to continue to work. But in order for us to grow, we really need to have that footprint that allows us to do that before we put in additional buildings, buildings and stuff like that. So I don't know if Wade Johnson or our engineers or architects would like to speak to some of what Kendra had to talk about early on. I would ask them to do so now if they wanted to.
Thank you, Kevin, very much. Commissioner Wu is looking for internet access at her property. Right now she's on satellite, just some sidebar business for you, so.
Well, that would be one of the first things we would try to do is Comcast is a big big customer of ours and we've already tried to route out the the best way to get internet out there.
Yeah. No, thank you. You were saying Wade was one of your engineers and stuff. Do any of your other team members have anything else to add?
Hello, are you guys hearing me? This is Wade.
Yes, very well.
All right, sorry. Greg was going to do the talking, but he's got an audio problem. I'm, I'm jumping in here.
I think I figured it out. You can hear me now.
Oh, awesome. I will, I will sign off then.
All right, don't sign off. Just go mute. There you go.
Yeah. Trying to figure out the voice, right? I missed, I heard most of what Kevin had to say, so. Is there certain things I need to discuss with what we've, we've talked about revising to meet the needs of the city or where we are?
Your name is Greg?
Yes, yes, sir.
No, I just, I wanted to give you an opportunity to jump in if there's anything else you want to add. Then what Kevin, Wade didn't talk much, obviously, but to what the city has proposed for us to recommend with, I think, a little bit of variance there and stuff. Is there anything else you want to add? I want to make sure everybody has that opportunity.
Sure. Well, I'm the project architect working with Wade. And we've worked with the city this week, talked with Kendra a little bit, and we've been working with our civil engineers to revise the parking area. So all the parking is going to be paved now. We've talked about adjusting the landscaping to have the bulk of the more trees that were on the southeast area of that future portion of the lot to be moved to the south and the southwest and to the west to make that buffer more, more solid from the equipment area. And so what else to be discussed, Kendra? The, well, the south elevation. Yes, that is supposed to be a temporary sort of exterior wall to the south. We didn't think with all the landscaping that's going to be happening around the equipment area that the building really wouldn't be seen that much from the south. So part of our reasoning is not putting any stone or siding there. Other than that, are there any other questions dealing with the variances that we're asking for that we need to clarify?
I don't, I don't think so. I think the recommendation is well rec, well written and such. No, thank you, Greg. Thank you, Kevin and Wade. Thanks for the quick picture of you. Just hang on. I'm going to open the public hearing for, do we, did I do the public hearing already? No. We'll, we'll listen to anybody that's in the general vicinity that may have comments and such.
I, I have one quick correction, Commissioner Varen camp. The, the report referenced that roughly twenty-eight thousand square foot building. It's actually a ninety-two hundred square foot building. Just it, it says it on the plan, but the in the report, it mentioned a larger size.
Okay, Kendra, is that any, it's kind of a significant number change, but.
Yeah, I'll, I'll have to look with them and, and look at their plans. I actually looked at the plans today and their plans actually have that number of twenty-eight thousand, so. Love to see where the discrepancy is with Wade and we'll clarify that before the council meeting.
All right.
Thank you so much. That number might be all three buildings added together. Probably. I don't know the areas of the two future buildings, but if you add them all together, they're approximately about that square footage. That makes sense.
Yep, Kendra, Kendra, I'll dig into that further and clarify before it comes to the councils, so. With that, we'll open the public hearing. Just reminder, we'll give five minutes to everybody. If we've got a lot of people on, which I don't think we do, again, repeating doesn't doesn't help us much. We are absolutely listening to every word that anybody talks to in a public hearing and such. We've got some pretty attentive commissioners on his groups, so. Natalie, I'll give you the floor. You can tell everybody what they need to do to get our attention and to get on the phone.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Members of the public that would like to participate in the public hearing, if you're joining us by phone, you can raise your hand by pressing star nine. If you're joining us by your computer, you will be able to access the raise your hand function within the reactions menu, menu located on the toolbar along the bottom of your screen. And some tablets and mobile devices may have the raise your hand function under the participants tab. We do ask that all comments are kept to a five minute time limit. And I will also ask that you start with your name and address. And Mr. Chair, currently we don't have any hands raised.
Great. It's like you almost read that off a piece of paper, Natalie. Better. Just a quick reminder too, if you want to be identified, do as Natalie requested. I do want to, I do want to reiterate too, we would love your name and current address if you are going to speak to this public hearing. Still nobody?
Nobody.
Okay. With that, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll make that motion.
We got everybody talked at once. I think we all agreed. Natalie, you can pick your person as far as the motion in the second. I will entertain the vote then. Commissioner Varen camp, I'll vote yay. Commissioner Wu?
Yay.
And Commissioner Lanterman.
Yay.
With that, the public hearing is closed. I don't have much to say. I will, I'm going to jump in first real quick. We, we had, we had a new development come to us last planning commission meeting and such. And we kind of closed the door on any variances and stuff. This is going to be a new parcel. There are some, some things that are going to make it difficult and stuff, but the last one, we kind of said, if we start giving variances right out of the out of the gate and stuff, they've got to be pretty special and we made none related to the, the one in our last meeting. I know that owner has been talking to the council and those kind of things, I think. I think Commissioner Wu, I think you brought that up and, and obviously Chair Jacobs brought it up too. Is if we just open the gate, everything is going to come with a variance and stuff. And we've got some pretty cool standards, I think, related to kind of developing new properties and those kind of things. So with that, Commissioner Wu, you want to start out with questions? Anything you might have?
Yeah, I, I do not support relaxing the building standards for that south elevation. I think that if the applicant had wanted to have a relaxation of the, of the requirements for that south elevation, they should have applied for variance. But having said that, I wouldn't have supported the variance because it appears to be from a financial standpoint only, which is not. In my understanding of the variance process, a defensive position for supporting a variance. We don't know when this building will be enlarged. It is, for all intents and purposes, a permanent appearance of the building, whether there's screening or not. And just looking at the, the site plan, it looks like two other buildings of approximately the same size, at least the footprint. If, if they're not, if it's not twenty-eight thousand for one building, then it looks like it's twenty-eight thousand divided by three for these buildings. But I think that there are two other south elevations that we will be dealing with down the line here. And I believe that the building standards should apply to the entire building, no matter where it is on the site, which is how the ordinance is written. I think it's difficult to require, it's like the last case we just, the last application we just saw where we're requiring that there be plantings and screenings in a location where there could be future expansion. However, we, there's no provision in the ordinance to not require it. So again, I would support how the ordinance is currently written, that we require the screening that is written in there around the storage area. I do support the variance being that this is an unusual site. I mean, we don't know how long that single family home is going to be at that intersection. It is an odd place for a single family home. It's been there. We don't know if this property will ever take that over, but, and then they would become a corner property. But we deal with what's presented with us now, which is this odd shaped dog leg of a site that does have two front yards. And I think with adequate screening, it can be successfully done and screened from adjacent properties and those traveling along County Road ten, County Road. So I support the variance for the storage in the front yard. Don't have any other comments. Thank you.
Very well said, Commissioner Wu. Before Commissioner Lanterman jumps in here quick. Kendra, I just want to clarify the one property right on the corner is that I, I call it a trailhead. Is that Hennepin Parks? Is that the city where there's that parking lot in that outhouse, I'm going to call it, a very nice little place, but that's one parcel. And then the other parcel is, is a home with a small, small piece of property there. Is that right on that corner? There's two properties there to deal with?
That is correct, Mr. Acting Chair. That is the Three Rivers Park District Trailhead. And then there's a separate lot with a home on it.
So I think Commissioner Wu said it well, is, is that has given some right as far as a variance and appreciated is written into this and written in, I think, very well. Thank you, Kendra. Commissioner Lanterman, any comments on this property?
I believe that Commissioner Wu summarized it very well and I don't believe in repetition, so I have no, no comments or questions.
Okay. Thank you guys very much. I've got just a couple. Mostly for Kendra, if I could. That future expansion to the east. And then obviously that building change in the backside of the main building, that would need to come back to the planning commission to be reviewed when that, when and if that time comes. Is that correct?
That is correct, Mr. Acting Chair. Adding buildings or expanding the storage area would be a site plan amendment and a conditional use permit amendment. That would be a public hearing at the planning commission and then council action.
Okay, you had mentioned or as part of your presentation to the the right turn lane, I'm going to say into this property and obviously out of this property, that's going to be taken care of by by this landowner and such. Where does that align? That was a question I had on the last time this came to us. Where does that align with the driveways across the street? Do they come with any, any alignment at all, or are we going to have three different entry points there? I think I'm talking Ebert is number one and then a little bit further west. I can't remember the name of that little building. And then the next driveway is obviously us brothers and the Marathon Gas Station and stuff, but I just, the, the picture shows, but it doesn't really show well enough on where that's going to align. I mean, is it almost an intersection or we got a whole bunch of entrances on the County Road ten there? The, the right turn lane is going to help out a lot, but I'm just curious on, on where it aligns with those other entrances and other driveways on the north side of ten.
Yes, that is a fantastic question and I am looking at the plan submitted by the applicant. I don't think it's clear, but I will get that answer before the council meeting.
Yeah, I just, you, you know and understand along with our staff that, that traffic patterns and those kind of things. This is a crazy busy intersection in the morning. I love it. It's close to me and such, but I just want to make sure it's safe. So if you could note that, that would be huge. That was everything I had on my list. I'll go back. That was everything I had on my list. I'll go back to Commissioner Wu. Do you have anything else to add there?
I do not, but that's a very good question about how the other driveways align or misalign with this proposed entrance. I'm surprised that why the reports didn't talk about that, or if it did, I missed that, but that would be interesting to know. But no other further questions. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Um, I'm guessing that the county is going to look at that real close to, but I just, I want to brought it to everybody's attention. Commissioner Lantern, anything you want to add?
No, thank you.
Thank you. With that, I'll take a entertain a motion and I'm going to say it kind of like it's written here, annotation, the motion to recommend approval of the conditional use permit and site plan. Am I, oh, I'm in the wrong one here. Let's try this again. We'll entertain a motion to recommend approval of the conditional use permit and the site plan and the variance related to the front yard storage, if I'm going to be specific about it. For D and D service at 23405 County Road 10. Did I say that well enough, Natalie or Kendra? We did good. All right. Uh, floor is open for motion. Anybody want to do that?
I'll make a motion to approve the site plan, CUP permit and variance as written.
Perfect. Thank you. Motion by Commissioner Wu. Do I have a second?
Second.
Perfect. Thank you very much, both of you. Roll call on it. I'll vote first. How's that? Commissioner Veren Camp, I say yay. Commissioner Wu? Commissioner Lanterman?
Yay.
Outstanding. Uh, we are voting three zero approval there. So good. Congrats again. COVID and everything else, another challenge for the landowners and stuff. I wish them well. I Chair Jacobs, welcome. The last group to Corcoran, I'm going to welcome you also. Again, a lot of the variances and those kind of things while we're a recommending body to the council. The council and the mayor have, uh, have the right to do a little bit more for you. So good luck. I think that comes to the council when, or Kendra, do you know when?
May 27th.
All right. So the end of the month here. So cross the Ts on that thing. So good.
Missy had someone with her, her cute little child. I have my old banker behind me here. But thank you very much. We appreciate your diligence and looking at this and we look forward to a, a long tenure in Corcoran.
Good. We want you here. It's just, sometimes we don't always give everybody exactly what we want. But I do know that the council is on and the mayor and, and they're very good listeners and stuff and they, and they want to make things, they want to help all new business and existing business. So welcome you guys and good luck. And I think, uh, I think I, I'll probably be on, but Commissioner Wu will be on, uh, on the 27th to answer any questions that somebody may have. So thank you guys. Thanks, Kevin. Good to meet you.
You guys have a great evening.
You too. We're almost done. It's going to be a good one. We'll move on to number nine unless anybody has any objections. Planning project update. It doesn't look like we have any actions, but who wants to take the planning project update? Is that Natalie or Kendra?
Mr. Chair, this is just an informational item. So unless there's questions, uh, this is just for your information. No action required.
All right. Nothing. That was quick. Let's move on to the city council report. Who's this council liaison Nichols? Is he on? I think I know him, but got to give him a hard time. I've been jabbing at him a little. I've been jabbing at those guys a little bit, so.
We can take it. That's fine.
I know you can very, very well. Go ahead. Floor is yours, sir.
Absolutely. So we've got a, a long list of activities here. I don't want to dwell on everything unless there are specific questions, but I had a couple of things I do just want to speak to briefly so the planning commission is aware. And I have a couple of things I would appreciate your feedback on as well. Uh, so one item that might be of interest to you is on the April 8th meeting, the Appaloosa Woods Neighborhood Street Improvement Project, we are proceeding along the path of identifying costs for that improvement. This is the most easterly portion of Corcoran that is not paved. And we will not be able to continue to support grading gravel in that area. It's been by Maple Grove. So we are proceeding for the first time in a long time, from what I understand, with a project to try to get that road paved as part of what Maple Grove is doing in that neighborhood. Next item that might be of interest to you, has anybody on the planning commission been paying attention to the council work sessions, especially related to residential zoning standards and conservation subdivision ordinances and cluster ordinances? So we had a, a nice discussion, April 22nd. We had some pretty broad agreement around a, a general intent around trying to get to a system where on a voluntary basis, we would allow certain incentives for developers to develop new sites in such a way that we preserve open space. Either through a clustering process or a, a conservation process. And staff is working on a, a program to bring back to a joint session that we will have with you in June. I would be very interested in any feedback that you might have based on what you've heard in that conversation to help guide us as we try to establish a reasonable program for the city going forward.
I'm just, what I, what I watch and pay attention to and stuff, you guys have obviously a very cool vision. I'm, I'm excited to watch it go through and help us send good recommended type developments to you. Again, we'd really like to get away from PUDs and conditional use permits. And truly, I think I'd, I'd really like to follow our land use plan off of our comp plan and those kind of things more. And then my other question, uh, Chair, Commissioner, excuse me, Councilmember Nichols was that joint session. I'm, I'm looking, I'm excited to have that. And you said June, you're expecting that?
That's what it says on the sheet here. Yes, I know it's moved at least once, so I think it's still set for June.
I just want to make sure I haven't missed it.
It hasn't happened.
The Commissioner Wu, Commissioner Lanterman, I know Commissioner Lanterman is new, but Commissioner Wu, have you been able to watch? I know you're a crazy busy lady, so.
No, I, I, I tuned in, I think for the last work session. You know, I'm, I'm nervously hopeful that, that this, that we can incentivize developers to preserve open land and existing stands of trees. And there can be some level of conservation easement or something that's put into place on a voluntary basis because there's some reward to the developer. And I say nervously hopeful because I think that there's a lot of evidence out in the greater community of where the former happens, that people only follow the rules if it's penalty based. And we've often talked about looking at ways to reward specific outcomes to happen rather than through penalty. So I'm, I'm excited to hear about it and to listen to the research that's being done by the different council members as they speak of it. And so I'm looking forward to the work session.
Me too. Yeah, I agree. The the penalty focus, I think will only get you so far. And you start to run on a goodwill at some point. So my hope too is that we can provide some positive incentives, either financial or procedural to make it worth their while to really consider alternate ways to develop. And I know Kendra's got some good thoughts on how, uh, moving from a PUD focused system to something that may be by right, but written in such a way to drive that pattern could be a really good way to do it. Uh, I, I really hope that that's true and that we see that there.
Commissioner Lanterman, any, anything for Councilmember Nichols?
Just said, um, I applaud the council's passion on this topic. And that, you know, as a, as a new member, I look forward to working with you.
Thank you. I look forward to that too. Uh, the next topic I thought might be of interest to this group. We had a couple of discussions around variances in this meeting today. Uh, there was another one that the council had at April 22nd meeting regarding a rear setback variance for a residence. We did end up opting to reverse the planning commission's recommendation and permit that variance to proceed as requested. Uh, and there's been a lot of debate, I think, within the council and also sounds like a little bit within the planning commission about what the standards for variances are. And I just want to say I welcome that debate and that we have different perspectives on it. I think for any legal standard, that's not a hundred percent objective, but in fact requires us to make subjective judgments. It's helpful that we are able to debate those things. And I would encourage the planning commission to continue to foster that kind of productive discussion as you're debating these variants, whether they make sense or not. Now, obviously if somebody is just asking for something and not going through the process to formally request a variance, we have to stay within the bounds of the law. But to the degree that we are being formally requested to follow the variance process, I, I would say it's okay to think about those in whatever degree of judgment you want to bring to bear for us to consider, we would welcome that feedback.
Councilmember Nichols, just a quick question about that and such. What I'm nervous about when I went back and looked at a lot of the properties in Ravinia, there's 400 and plus that have been set in there done and such. I think I counted 65 homes are extremely limited and tight to the wetlands and such. And I, I was, I'm, I'm nervous as Commissioner Wu mentioned. I'm nervous that we are going to get a significant number of requests for variances to start adding on larger decks or three or four season porches and those kind of things. And me for one, that wetland variance or wetland setback is, is meaningful and those kind of things. And I, I'm not real crazy about granting a lot of it. The other thing I'm nervous about is all of a sudden, a lot of our questions are going to be as developers come. Is everything set up that we won't have variances to add on decks, porches, three season, four season additions and those kind of things? It's almost like we're going to start getting into from the planning commission side, looking at lot by lot on sizes and those kind of things. Is there a way to push that back instead of onto the council or planning commission back to the developer and such that here's your building pad, you will not be allowed to go outside that building pad and that includes porches, patios, decks, those kind of things. Is there a way to do that? Or I just, I'm nervous we're going to get kind of jumbled up in a whole bunch of variances related to those kind of things.
No, that's a really good question. I, I guess I would, I would reply in a couple of different ways to that. The first is that in this particular case, it wasn't a wetland issue. The council didn't consider whether it's okay to encroach on a wetland buffer. This was a rear setback instead. And the grounds that we considered as we made our decision was pretty unique to the parcel in terms of what was behind it and how it didn't impact any neighboring properties. It was also unique in the sense that it was based upon a miscommunication. Uh, and I think there is a, a valid concern around, are there going to be systemic miscommunications? Where developers don't disclose appropriate setbacks. And we talked about what we can do as a city to try to make sure that that doesn't happen by the standards we put in place for how those surveys are created. Uh, and there was considerable debate on that topic, whether that was appropriate or not. I don't know that we've come to a full conclusion on that yet. I would hope that we are working with developers and the permitting process to try to make sure that it's as clear as it can be to the degree that the city can control it. I remember, I believe our council member, Thomas, had a viewpoint that I thought was interesting. I'm not sure that I completely agree with it. I think to a point I do. Uh, where he said that it, it's our role as volunteers, as counselors, to consider what the public is asking for when they ask for variance. That's part of the job that we signed up to do. That doesn't mean that I want to have you guys up until 2 AM doing it all of the time. Uh, if it becomes a serious problem, I think council will want to look at it and address it. But I, I don't want, from my perspective, speaking as an individual, I don't want our policy on variances to be orchestrated to minimize the burden on our town. If it becomes too big a burden, we'll consider it, but I don't want to treat people in my view unfairly or unjustly. Because it might lead to more variance applications in the future.
We're volunteers and, and I think we're all willing to listen and such. I just, I, I heard from one member in Ravinia. The, one of the properties, they just, they asked the developer, what happens if they want to do stuff out back and the response was, well, just take it to the city. They'll grant you a variance and everything will be fine. And I just, it, we talk about penalties, we talk about things, we got to get these developers and stuff to own some of that stuff. And whether or not that's true or not, I don't know. I can't prove it. But with some of the things that have happened recently and stuff, I can, I could believe it. I just, like I said, the long meetings and those kind of things, we're, we're putting in the time, we're doing what we're supposed to. And if it's not something we want to do, we are volunteers, we can, we can absolutely step away. But I think you've heard it from all three of us. We love this city. And we want to do what's right. And I think you guys are in the position because you believe the same. You love this place and and want it to be a really neat place in the future. So thank you for that. Commissioner Wu, Commissioner Lanterman, any other questions for Jeremy? Did you have more stuff, Jeremy, too?
I had one more thing I would like your feedback on, but we can pause here for any additional. I, I do want to hear your thing.
Well, I guess, and again, just being the, the new person here, I don't mean to speak out of turn. But with, with respect and, you know, I did, uh, you know, I did, uh, listen in on, on the last meeting and I thought that it was a very spirited debate. And it does sound as though there was an alleged miscommunication between the builder and the homeowner. But I, I don't see that as, uh, as a condition for granting a variance, that the ordinance doesn't say a variance is applicable if there's a miscommunication between the builder and the homeowner. So I guess I'm more of a purist and I think that it would be a good practice to follow the ordinances as written. And if we don't like how they're written, then they should be rewritten. Thank you.
I don't disagree. I think certainly if that was the only factor, I would agree that that would not substantiate it. The, the way that I conceived it, and I'll, I'll speak in defense of the argument, not in defense of me personally, was that uh, one of the standards that were required to show if we're going to grant a variance. Or that one of the factors we're supposed to consider is you're going to vary and says whether the situation is or that the plight of the landowner is unique to the parcel or to the property and not caused by the landowner. And so in that case, that was part of what I saw as making it unique. The plight unique to the parcel was the way that it was not communicated. There will be a limitation. But you're right, certainly somebody just being misled by the builder, if that was the only factor, that wouldn't entitle you to build a massive out of proportion deck. And it wouldn't entitle you to encroach into a wetland where we're trying to preserve natural space. There were a constellation of unique factors in this particular case that I felt merited a variance to be approved. And that likely is not going to be repeated very often.
Anything else? It's not, uh,
I'll, I'll let you go in just a minute here.
Yeah, I just referenced this Minnesota League of Cities that Kendra circulated some years ago that talks about variances and it reflects upon Minnesota State statute. And I read this just about every time we're going, we have a variance come up to refresh my memory about what is my role and what are the limits of what I'm doing here? Because it's all about me, obviously. It's, you know, there's a criteria here that we need to. there's a criteria here that we need to review and then weigh up against. And so just taking the different variances that have come forward out of the mix. I just wondered if this Minnesota League of Cities thing, Kendra, can be circulated again? Or has it been rewritten in any way? I think mine is from two thousand and eleven.
Yeah, um, in fact, I think Natalie has on the agenda tonight, I think, still. Uh, no, not tonight. Well, Natalie is working on putting together a training session for the planning commission, and I think that's one of the items uh, that would be included in that, um, a, a training session. So absolutely. Thank you.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah, I, I think I've seen the same thing. I got a copy from the league, uh, as part of my training, and it has been very helpful for me too. So I've been thinking about it for the first few times here. Okay. And then the last item I would like to get your input on, uh, in October of twenty nineteen. The council considered a proposal to deal with conditional uses in residential zones. And one of the discussions, sorry, twenty twenty, uh, one of the discussions that had, I would say, some level of support in the former council was the notion of simply removing conditional uses from the lower density residential areas. Uh, and so I'm proposing that the council consider that as a way to close out the topic from that work session back in twenty twenty. So I, I propose some red lines. It'll be discussed, uh, in the near future, probably in the next couple of months. But I wanted to get a quick read from the planning commission, what your thoughts would be about for the lower density residential areas. So, uh, RSF one, two, and three, and, uh, residential mixed use one. If those simply didn't have conditional uses in them. And you would continue to be allowed to do those same conditional uses in other parts of the city, but not in lower density neighborhoods. And the reasoning behind that was, most of those uses that are conditional uses in the current code would allow very large, out of scale, uh, constructions in what typically are lower density neighborhoods. So that the fit is not excellent. Uh, and it would make more sense to permit those things in areas either are not yet developed or in areas that will ultimately host a, um, higher intensity land use. So it's a, a way of ensuring sort of this natural flow within the city. We, we do have a lot of areas where we have low density residential areas that already abut commercial or industrial properties. And, uh, this seems like a step that we could take to reduce the potential for even further disruption of a lower density rural feel as we go forward. So I know, I know I gave you a lot of time to think about this, but initial reads now would be welcome. And if you wanna communicate with, with me or the council between now and the next meeting, uh, that feedback would be welcome.
I, I love what you just said. I, I, it would be nice, like I said, to follow the complaint as much as possible. Um, but not totally restrict us, but, uh, low density, those kinda things, I'd really like them to stay low density. Um, instead of, at one end of the property, there's two hundred homes on twenty acres. And at the other end of the property, there's three homes on, on an acre. I'd, I'd much rather see it better designed, better flow, whatever the words are. And, uh, to remove that, I think it would be something I would support. So. Commissioner Wu, what do you think?
Well, I, I'm gonna need to look at that a little more before I think I can speak to it. Cause I'm trying to figure out what is it we're trying to filter out here. Um, for me, I keep getting stuck on the Airbnb thing, which kinda went to bed with COVID. That's where you could have high volume of use in a low density area that is not based on what a lot of people are writing, is not compatible with single family homes. You know, you're renting out a property, and there's just this constant changing, uh, group of people inhabiting that property. That's still a single family home. But you, you're looking at a use that is, you know, rental. So, hi, you know, it's basically, um, uh, accommodation like a hotel, but it's in the shape of a house. So for me, I'd need to know a little bit more about what is it we're trying to target here. Um, I don't even know if an Airbnb is a conditional use permit. I'm not sure. I know we had a conversation about this months ago, pre-COVID, and of course, you know, it hasn't been an issue since uh, with the slowdown in the hospitality sector. But, um, I need to do more info, you know, I need to check in a little bit more about what does that mean?
Very good. I, I think you should see red lines. So just a proposal for discussion coming out with the next packet going to the council. So you could take a look there and any feedback that you would have based on your review, I welcome.
Commissioner, uh, Landerman, any comments on that?
Yes, I, I would like to learn more, but, um, I am supportive of your, of your comments and the direction just from the, the, the short amount of time that you spoke on this tonight. So, um, I am supportive. I'd like to learn more.
That's fair. Please review and let me know what you think in more detail.
Great job, you guys. Councilmember Nichols, anything else?
No, unless there are questions that you have from the list, uh, in the packet. That's all that I thought we should discuss.
Um, I'll jump in real quick. Any, any word on the substation?
From where I've heard, uh, and I don't know if Tom will have anything that he wants to unmute and speak to. Uh, the application has been withdrawn. My assumption is that they're pursuing a different approach. And we'll be following again, and you'll see it in its future incarnation in the near future, but I don't know details.
All right. Your, uh, comments about paving Appaloosa Woods, that's us paving, but Maple Grove doing the snow removal? Just because they're already in that neighborhood? Is that what you were saying?
No, that's a good point. I'm not sure about, um, how snow removal is going to be handled. Uh, Maple Grove is paving their portion of that neighborhood. And they're getting rid of their grader, so they can no longer support a gravel road for us. They've been doing road grading of the gravel. Um, and that will not be an option going forward, so it needs to be paved. Um, and we're proceeding to use their, uh, project as an opportunity to reduce the cost to our residents by using that mobilization to do the same area.
How many residents does that affect back in there? Do you know?
I wanna say it's like seventeen homes. It might be less than that. It's a pretty small neighborhood.
And they're all kind of on board with doing that and waiting for an assessment number, those kinda things, I'm assuming?
I know that there's been a neighborhood meeting. I have not gotten a flavor for the reaction yet. So we're looking forward to hearing that.
All right, um, yeah, I written down work session. You already brought that up. I don't have anything else. Commissioner Wu, you've got anything for Jeremy? Councilmember Nichols?
Anything further?
All right. Commissioner Landerman, anything, anything from you?
No, thank you.
Thank you all very much for the service. Welcome to the team, Mark.
Thank you. Again, I look forward to working with you.
Likewise.
Perfect. Um, great job tonight, everybody. I'm gonna jump on to, uh, nine C, I guess. Anybody got any other business they wanna talk about? With, uh, the silence there, I'm gonna move on to number ten. Commissioner Liaison Calendar, anybody have any issues with that? I'm on, uh, the thirteenth, uh, Commissioner Wu's on the twenty-seventh, Commissioner Jacobs on the tenth, and so on, folks. Anybody have any issues? Again, silence is always good sometimes, and this is a good place. So, uh, with that, I will look for a motion to adjourn our, uh, planning commission meeting this evening.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you. Uh, get a second there?
I'll second it, Wu.
All right, thanks. Uh, we'll take roll call. Commissioner Baron, or Acting Chair Baron Camp, I'll say yay. Commissioner Wu?
Yay.
And Commissioner Landerman, again, welcome. Your first one. I tried to keep it under two hours. I think I just made it.
Good, congratulations. Yay.
Um, with that, I think we have adjourned the meeting. Thank you, everybody. Um, council members, I think Mayor is still on too. Thank you guys for participating, listening. If you got any questions, you got three of us to reach out to, but, uh, look forward to seeing you guys on the thirteenth. Thank you, Natalie, for running the, the show, and, uh, Kendra for all your participation too. Thank you guys all very much.
Thank you. Good night.
Good night, everyone.
Thank you. Good night.